As a supervisor to the board, since he was appointed and they take his oath that is a new resignation, so the thirty day clock starts afresh. There is no requirement that you consider hold all new interviews of anyone. I've got several names of people that you discussed last month, so it's really prerogative to consider any of those four for appointment. I see that all four are here tonight, so does anybody on the board have any additional questions for any of the candidates or all of them?
Are you jumping in? Are we done with the solicitor's report?
Yes.
Mike, we're up here with the, your solicitor's report here with the Stormwater case from Manchester, what's the update? Because I saw the same thing printed twice in the last two solicitor's reports. Has Delphan had been talked to?
That was transferred to Delphan and he, one of the things he's meeting with them about, and speaking with Chris a few weeks ago, and I know Steven interface with him as well at date, the different areas were going to be cleaned out and he was going to otherwise check on site again.
Yeah, we had to go through another review before the shop and the other one in Manchester.
When did we find, Delphan has been in here like, what, a year? I've seen him a long time. He used to come once a few times a year or more and we haven't seen him in a while. Be nice to have an updated, someday, maybe next month if you're going to invite him to a meeting?
Yep.
Something here just, we have any questions or?
Yeah, okay. So again, anybody on the board have additional questions for any or all of the candidates of the community? At this point then, somebody could make a motion if we want to try to fill it this evening. There have been no other people put their name in, correct? Second. Questions or comments? Mrs. Scott, can you come up front please?
I don't have a question in reference to Mr. Dunne first. My first question is, did you vote to accept the resignation of Mr. Nash?
There's no legal requirement that they do so. The second class township code just provides for someone's resignation that's effective when they submit their resignation.
Well, the only thing I would say is I think you should put it out for the public again to a thought. Boy, this was, awfully does that happen. So, I would not favor the appointment of Mr. Dunne because he's never even been involved in the township in any of his stuff. Never has volunteered for anything, never has been involved. Just Mr. Maynard, just by Mrs. Colt, I do believe Mr. Porter, when he moved in to town, he became very interested. And I don't believe I ever seen Mr. Hersaw volunteer for anything either. So, on those grounds, because I would want somebody who has given their extra time and their heart in the community, not seeking titles and glory. So therefore, I would prefer that you wait for thirty days and accept other applications.
Mr. Redd?
I just wanted to tell the board you have a tough decision to make tonight, but in reference, let's see, the report of Mr. Dunne. Mr. Dunne has been involved in the community for years with the baseball, all the Phillies, involved in the township. And of course, his father's been supervised twice, alright? So he has been involved in this community for, I don't know what his age is, but I know he's been, his whole family's been involved with the community and he's been involved with athletics with young people in this community and very knowledgeable of the township. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
With all due respect to Mrs. Scott, I also would support the appointment of Randy Dunne. And I think there are time constraints here in regard to table and look for other candidates. I think he would be a very good candidate. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
We did make note of Mr. Nash resigning on the Facebook page.
And on the website.
And on the website. Did you solicit any new?
We did put it up on Facebook and on the website requesting new applicants, but that was the only way that we did it this time.
Right. This is our third resignation this year, so we kind of have several times just wanted to see if people are interested in picking up your, be able to put their name in.
All those in favor, aye.
Mr. Dunne, you definitely want the gate? You want?
Aye.
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, four zero. Welcome, Mr. Dunne. Thank you for your volunteering. And if you talk with the girls after the meeting, they'll get you information as far as the, what you need to sign and all that. Thank you very much. Moving on with these issues.
Next, just a notice, the Bawa RUID conditional use hearing has been set for October tenth at six P M. The attached Assistant Treasurer slash Assistant House Manager position has been advertised and we're still accepting applications. And then lastly, just a note that the Holland instant daycare property, land development application was filed. It's going to be before the planning commission at its next meeting, as will the Bawa project. And the review period for that will run until December eleventh, twenty sixteen.
Okay.
So I had to kind of follow your point about having Chris at a meeting. Once the P C cycles their review of that, if it might be appropriate, then Chris will need to give us the alternate application.
Okay.
Should I hold off and bite you, Tim?
That'll defer to the board however they want.
Mike, can I ask you a question basically just as an attorney? Are you able to swear someone out?
So to swear a supervisor in, it's got to be either a notary public, a judge, or a district justice.
Lisa, are you, did you get another?
And there's an oath of office form that he would fill out and file with, please.
I was just wondering.
Planning Commission report, Mr. Crowe? You have anything? Unless if you could come up front and sit down. Everyone can hear you.
Yeah. Good evening. I guess so. Couldn't hear myself. On our meeting this month, we didn't have forum, so we didn't have much other than we were going through the same things in regards to the master planner program. We were able to continue going forward with it. At date, we have fifteen people that have signed up for this. We're looking to have it over at the emergency, Chester County Emergency Service Training Center. We got prices from them. It would be a small fee over there for locking up the building and making sure it's secured after this, the three nights and...
Do you have that fee? Sorry.
What's that? Three seventy-five for the three nights?
How much?
Three seventy-five.
For all of it, okay.
Yeah.
Dennis, when I just come here, I remember we have a free building for the HOA.
Takes more time to set up.
What do they need, just a projector?
Projector, the setup for teaching, setup as a classroom.
Okay, so there's, I see, more people, yeah, we used to have that.
I don't know.
I see, okay.
I thought, yeah, just for small fee, yeah, just for, it's just to keep somebody there to lock up after we're done and make sure we don't take off of the place. And then, so it'd be sixteen fifty right now. Anything over the fourteen people that we have, most all of these are township people that I can tell right at the moment are work for the township in one capacity or another collectively or serving.
These are East Fallfield people or this is Fred Allen?
East Fallfield people, all from the board, the planning commission, historic, and other people that are, anything we have over that, I want to get approval tonight so we could go around to some of the other municipalities. Mr. Stevens has five more people, so that should make twenty each one when we get there. It's just a little more off of our costs, one hundred and fifty-five each person over that. So...
Could it be lower? I thought the whole gate, the whole, for the presentation was, what, sixteen fifty? Or if we're able to have just a presentation to a mass audience, wasn't it a million people? So it's a number sixteen fifty?
Yes.
Okay, so we're already...
Yeah, we're covering ourselves and then anything else we bring in is just going to be subtracting off of that price.
So how are you going to do that with the other people?
I'm just going to go around to some of the other municipalities and ask them persons. I think some that Mr. Stevens had was the town township, you know, so I'm just going to check around with some of the other neighboring townships.
I guess for me, I just need to see the breakdown fee just to make sure that East Fallfield residents aren't paying for other people. So it's going to be, you know, if we have enough people right now for us to do the sixteen fifty fee, I understand that you're trying to decrease it, but it just, now we're introducing East Fallfield funds for other people, so we just have to break down evenly for whatever the cost of other people coming in from another municipality. Because right now, I mean, we're at the sixteen fifty base level right now just to do a presentation, regardless of the municipalities, you know, so we reached that number, so...
Right. Well, each one come off of that, I think five people's seven hundred and fifty dollars off of that price.
So it's always a number, yeah, the number is known.
That's the one of the few that we went over the other day when we come out, so... Then we'd have refreshments there and stuff like this for people, something to drink, light meal. And I'm just looking to make sure that we could go ahead with that, take that out of our budget from the planning commission.
Planning commission had a three thousand dollar budget this year and they've used thirty-six dollars.
I saw that, yeah. There's a little bit of...
We're spent for the rest of them.
I wondered, that would a motion be needed though?
It would, yeah. I think you do up to sixteen seventy-five because then we'd leave the potential for that to be reduced down with other, is three seventy-five for the, is that from...
The total would be twenty-two seventy-five, including the training center, the projected cost for food. If they didn't use that all, obviously it would come down.
And right now, we can technically bring in more East Fallfield residents. What's the most, what's the most common need you should handle?
They say up to thirty, so...
So we have room for East Fallfield?
Cover price in half anyways, so...
So I got your email. I'll do it in a couple of days whether I can go or not, so just to make sure, okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission spending up to two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to host the master planner course, part one. Second. Questions or comments? Mrs. Scott, can you come up in front please? Yeah, that's what it says on here.
Did you say that the deal was one hundred and fifty-five per person?
Hundred and fifty beyond for anybody not in the township.
Well, a hundred, I thought you said one hundred and fifty-five. I, times fifteen would be two thousand three hundred twenty-five. Then you add on the three hundred and seventy-five for around all of the building, you're over the two thousand.
There's a, there's a flat rate of sixteen fifty for up to, but once you hit the fourteen?
Eleven to fifteen.
Eleven to fifteen mark. So we've hit that mark, so we have a flat rate for the presentation of sixteen fifty. Then there's the fee for the building of three seventy-five.
And two fifty budgeted for...
And then two fifty budgeted for foods and drinks, you know, refreshments for everybody that's attending. So that's where the twenty-two seventy-five comes from.
Dennis, you're saying that one fifty price because everyone that you're going to invite from the outside are going to be charged one fifty?
Yes.
Okay. How would they pay that's going to check to East Fallfield? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dennis, what's part one? Is that...
The community plan, which we're taking.
Okay. How many parts are there?
There's three parts and then there's an additional one that goes, there's zoning and subdivision and land development. And there's another zoning administration, which is kind of... There's zoning and subdivision and then there's another part that's zoning administration, which really goes into finer detail on how to administer a lot of the things for zoning. That's usually upon request. So once you, once you take the zoning, you kind of get the reason why there's, takes more time to get into real fine specifics of things, you know, like the one where I was trying to explain, yeah, section thirteen hundred where they had the open space and all the calculations and it just, you know, most of the time you only hear it once or twice, it just kind of goes over your head. But, you know, they have practice sessions where you can actually be given a, an example of it and you go into little groups and try separating it out to what you've learned from it and then confer with the rest of the students to see, you know, what some of the specifics are. So it really helps a lot for really looking at those types of issues when they come up in the township.
Any other questions or comments?
Question?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe, should I abstain because I'm attending?
You're not gaining any personal pecuniary benefit from it, so you're not required under the ethics act of...
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, four zero.
We did, also at the meeting had two applicants, but since we didn't have forum, we didn't vote, so we're waiting for the next meeting coming up here and, you know, we'll present them and then bring it to the board. I know that's going to be after the conditional use for the Bawa, but it's ongoing process I guess.
How many numbers do you have right now?
We have four and then we have two applicants.
And all four that you have there are attending regularly or?
All the last meeting. Everybody went on the night, out of state even, so one told me, the rest didn't. Now with that, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Harley, is there anything in the treasurer's area that you need to go over your mic or that might have a question without anybody on the board as questions on?
Just about the audit company. Mike, can you explain the process? They originally asked me to get proposals for an auditing company, but there's specific parameters that currently I go with that.
Yeah, so the second class township code, excuse me, is what authorizes us to engage a private auditor in place of our elected auditors and that's the role that these different companies take. It's got its own separate, peculiar requirements to do that. Number one, it's got to be our intent to appoint someone, it's got to be advertised at least thirty days before we do that appointment. Number two, it's got to be on or after organization meetings, so it would have to be after our January twenty-seventeen meeting that we made the appointment. And third, it's got to be done by legislation. So those are certainly things that as we tick toward the end of the year, we can have ready for in November, be authorized for your organization meeting, so that you're ready to go afterwards meeting, you know, that's forty day notice. It would still be good to talk about the different applicants and choose which one of you are best so that you're ready to go ahead and come out.
Have we got proposals?
We have two.
From the...
I missed it, how the Barbara Kane Thornton?
Yeah, Barbara Kane Thornton, okay. Was there a particular person, Barbara Kane Thornton, would be the point of, Japan Baker or?
I meant the town.
Okay.
I'm not sure who it would be or...
Okay. I think I'm about...
For Barbara Kane Thornton, we had, we had put out to the Chester County Secretary's Association and that and then one other firm came back, but pretty much all of them had said Barbara Kane Thornton. Nika Skatowski, who we currently use, so I requested a proposal from them. And then the third company, they just, they're not giving that one.
Does anybody else have, anything else on my side this evening on the agenda? All right, thank you, Mike.
Have a great night over there, thanks.
Police department, the August police report is submitted in the back for review. Anything to go over to Chief?
I have nothing for Mike.
Public Works Department, that report is also in the back. Tag, you have anything for us?
Yeah, I just want to go over a few things here.
Could you come up to Mike though? That's all right.
Right. Frog Hollow Bridge, the opening should be October twenty-first. I was down there and I had a call from Prequem Valley, I guess he's, they're the ones that do our bridges and stuff. And the bridge down, after you come over Frog Hollow Bridge from east, coming this way, is our bridge. And he's saying that that bridge combination weight is twenty-three ton, but he's saying it should be fourteen ton for just one vehicle, but he said it would make it up to the board if you wanted fourteen or fifteen ton. That's just a ton difference.
But it could take twenty-three?
The bridge, our bridge's combination weight is twenty-three.
Okay.
So what he has to do is he has to submit that to Pendot and Pendot will send us a thing and we have to get some signs made up for that bridge because that bridge is ours, not Frog Hollow Bridge, but the one that you come across. And he's saying that they inspected that bridge and that bridge is, we can make it fifteen ton, the combination weight is twenty-three. His name is Kevin Gross. He said, you know, I could call him back Thursday or so, he's off tomorrow. It's up to the board if they want to make it fourteen or fifteen ton.
What's the tonnage on that Frog Hollow Bridge? There can't be that much.
The Frog, Frog Hollow Bridge is no limit. That bridge is not really, it's hard to believe, but it's no limit.
There's a height on it. There's a height.
Right, obviously it's restricted by the height for some.
Now the height...
There are attempts to...
The height is twelve.
Well, maybe it's...
Yeah, the height is going to be twelve.
Okay.
The height of the bridge will be twelve.
Yeah, so tractor trevers still won't be...
Yeah, and they, like I said, they should have it completed October twenty-first. And I dig it down and that guy from Pendot was there and they busted our road up a good bit down there, so they have to replace that part of the, going up to the drain because they busted it up a good bit. There's a couple of different spots, but it's coming along. It's, the sides are all on and now they're starting to roof, so it should be done, I guess, by October twenty-fourth. They have a bunch of stone down there, it's like six hundred tons of stone. They asked us if we'd help haul it out there, what we could have. So it's up to the board if they want me to go ahead and, a couple of trucks get down there, they're giving us all this stone.
Do we have need for it?
Always needs, yeah, so we have space to stop filing, so they're going to load, we're not going to load, they're going to load, plus they're going to use a couple of their trucks.
Okay, so they'll just go load it and move it wherever they want?
Yeah, we'll put it over to Composty, so it's big stones, rip raps and we use it all the time.
So Tag, what are you trying to do with the reduction of the tonnage on the bridge? What vehicles are you trying to control?
Well, he's just, he's just trying to control that, there's not a lot of weight being on that older bridge that, here you come across into our township because it's an old bridge. It's where the wall comes up about four foot high, has a, you know, a, you know, a few there. But there's steel beams under, I have pictures that they did back in oh-five, that they put weight on it on back in oh-five. But they come around and inspect, I think, about every five years or so.
Yeah, that'd be probably the moment.
It's just up you guys. I mean, we can make it fourteen ton or fifteen ton. A bus can't go across there or anything like that because buses have to be sixteen ton. So they won't even think about going.
Right.
But the fire apparatus, the modern trucks, they might be able to go across it, you know, for emergency reasons, they don't, if they, you know, have to fire out that way.
Okay.
Adds a, you know, height, because it's only twelve foot.
Any may have, lost in the tunnel?
Should have kept it fourteen ton.
I think if you guys remember, you guys that owned that property down there, they were complaining that they only wanted a twelve ton, you know, when they, when they're arguing back and forth, they don't want heavy going across that way. I think we should...
Yeah, I'm fine with fourteen. I'll have it that way.
I'll call him on Thursday and that way he can submit to Pendot and Pendot will send us a thing where a sign should go and where we should put it and everything like that.
Why is there no rating on the bridge?
Rating on the bridge, there is no rating.
I know, but I've seen cover bridges elsewhere with ratings before you get to it.
The beams that these guys put in down there, I was down there, I asked them, I said, what's the rating on this bridge? He said, there is no. He said, this bridge is a whole, hold it wherever you want to put it.
Is it worth putting a sign up though? Or putting a limit on it even though there is a...
It's up to Pendot, it's not like you're the...
In a way, we're controlling it one way, but we're not controlling it from our...
Right. We're controlling it if you come across the bridge. You're not going to... Okay, we got that. I did put a thing in there for seal coating, I guess it's on there for a farco there. I was looking at that parking lot over there and it's, it's cracking up all over the place. That's home there, they give us a price of thirty-three hundred hours to seal coat it and line it and everything like that. If you want me to try to, try to get a better price on that, I will. We ain't going to get it done next year. That's what he gave me, a price of thirty-three hundred. And that's the line, the handicaps stalls, all lines, because we're starting to lose the lines over there.
Right.
Lines are starting to fade away and I don't know if anybody remembers when they built that, there's four foot of stone underneath that. And, you know, it's, it's, it is what it is. If you put the seal coat on it, I think it'll help.
Fine with that, if you want to try to get other quotes, if it's not going to be till next year anyway?
Yeah, we could get another quote and we'll...
Yeah, that would be...
I think it will be better in a whole spring anyway because it will have more summer and more cold weather. It just want to take a two-day, two-day period to do that.
Right.
Because we'll have to block everything, all the people, we'll have to park and drive while we're gone. So I'll go, I'll go ahead and I'll get you two more places if you like.
Yeah, that'd be great if we could get a great total.
All right. The nine oh four performance grant has been completed, thanks to the secretaries for helping me out. This year, we did six hundred and twenty-seven tons of recycling, which is twelve more ton than what we did last year, so people in East Fallfield are doing a good job as far as recycling. I mean, these recycling totes and stuff that we put out, it's keeping the streets a lot cleaner. I mean, before when we had just buckets out there, we had stuff all over the place and the township was looking... I mean, before when we had just buckets out there, we had stuff all over the place and the township was looking.